We'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome everyone to the October 4th City Council Meeting of the City of Wyndham. Tonight on the consent agenda, we have the minutes from the following council minutes, September 20th and 27th, Wyndham HRA, August 10th and September 14th, Park and Rec Commission, September 14th, Utility Commission, September 28th, and the regular bills are also included. Council action?
I would make motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Jenny, seconded by Lisa. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. First item is the public hearing this evening. This is a residential tax abatement request for Grove Acres Lot 4 Block 2. And Steve is going to take care of the, just a brief overview, Steve, to start with.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you noted, this is for Grove Acres Lot 4, 1923 Bud Road. They're looking at building a single-family residence, estimated value $210,000. This is part of the Catwood County Home Initiative program that's been in operation. It was first five years and then it was extended for three more. That runs through the end of this year. This particular property, the five-year abatement would qualify for. The approximate amount from the city would be $1,507 a year as the bounty, the abatement over the five-year period, that would be $7,536. These are ones that has pretty much followed the pro forma for all of the other ones that were done. And if you have any questions about this particular one, I can answer them at this time.
Anything questions for Steve prior to opening the hearing? Hearing none, we will open the public hearing in regards to the residential tax payment, Grove Acres Lot 4 Block 2. Any members of the public wish to comment? Once again, any members from the public wish to comment? I will ask Steve one question. Have we had any comments from the public, Steve?
No, sir.
Okay. Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Seeing no action, this is now council decision. The council wished to take action on the resolution that was included in your packet.
I'll make the motion to approve the five-year tax abatement for 1923 Grove Road.
And I went second.
Resolution introduced by Lisa, seconded by Marv. Any discussion from the council? One question, go ahead.
Just one quick comment. Those houses just really look nice in that neighborhood. You know, when you're driving by, that development is really coming along and I think really a great addition to the city.
Thank you for the comment. Anything further? Hearing none. Steve, a roll call.
Quaid.
Yes.
Farag.
Yes.
Grunig.
Yes.
Sherman.
Abstain.
Nelson.
Yes.
Resolution carries four, zero, and one abstention. Next, we have department heads. Any department heads wish to speak now or wait for your turn on the agenda? I guess we'll wait. Next, we have a resolution accepting a donation. Judith Heinz to the library, and I believe that was $500. So we appreciate that, and this is a resolution to accept that. Is there an introduction of that resolution?
I will introduce the resolution authorizing the acceptance of the donation of $500 from Judith Heinz to the Wyndham Library.
Second.
Resolution introduced by Marv, seconded by Jason. Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve.
Okay. Quaid.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Grunig.
Yes.
Farag.
Yes.
That resolution carries. Thank you, Judith. The library appreciates that. It'll be put to good use. Next item, Fire Department. We have compere financial grant acceptance. Is this something, did Ben work on this one, Steve?
Absolutely, 100%.
All right, 100% Ben. Thank you, Ben, for getting this application completed and such. And this is a $1,300 grant. So this will go towards, to purchase some new tanks, as explained. Okay? And no match requirement. So with that, and with thanks, this also is a resolution of the grant acceptance agreement.
Just a motion, Mayor.
Yep. I caught myself there. It's an agreement on this, so Jenny has a question.
I don't know if you can, or if I can, just explain what is a drop tank? Or like, what is it actually? I read through it and I really didn't quite know for sure, so be good to just know.
Ben Erickson, Fire Chief. A drop tank is, is, well, I guess the way we explain it to the little kids, it's a swimming pool. It's a, it's a tank with a rubber liner in it that holds 2,000, 2,100 gallons of water. And each one of our tankers right now will carry 2,000 gallons of water. So for like on rural fires where we don't have hydrants and stuff like that, we haul our water to them. So we drop the water into these tanks and then the truck can go back to town and fill up again, or go somewhere and fill up again while they're using that water out of that tank, is what it is. And the liners is what this grant is for. The framework themselves are all fine, but the liners are getting pinhole leaks and stuff like that in them. So I think I've applied for this grant the last two or three years in a row, and we got accepted this year.
Where is this tank located?
There's one on each one of our tanker, tankers. They fold up into a, probably about an eight-inch wide by 11-foot long compartment is what they fold up into. And then when you open them up, they're about a 12, 11 by 11 rectangle is what they are and stand about probably about 30 inches tall. So they're stored on the truck. So as soon as that truck gets on scene, we have that drop tank with us and we pull it off and drop the water into it.
And how much time does that buy you?
How much time does what buy me?
The tank. You drop the tank, it's already filled, you run to town to get more water. Do you run out of the water before you get back, or?
That, that really depends on the fire. A lot of times we'll have, or on a bigger fire, we'll have our two tankers running, we'll have anywhere from two to six more tankers from other communities running at the same time. The last big fire we had was out at Mattson's. I think we had six tankers running. For a while, we weren't even keeping up with six tankers, but then we did catch up and, and we got enough of the fire put out, so obviously we weren't using quite as much water. But if we didn't have these and we had to suck the water off of this truck and then go back to town to get water, it wouldn't be good. Hell.
Any other questions? Thank you for the good question, Jenny. You look younger, just sitting there. All right. Thanks, Ben.
Yep.
Is there a motion to approve the agreement?
I would make the motion to approve the agreement for the drop tank liners.
Okay, a motion by Jenny, seconded by Jim. Any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you very much. Next, Park and Rec Commission recommendation regarding the horse shows. If you've read the minutes and also the memo in your packet, I think we should have Tim maybe come out. Pardon me? Yep. Okay, we have two council members that sit on that commission as liaisons to, and the gals over here, Lisa and Jenny. And so this has been a topic for, I would say, probably several years in watching this decision, you know, to be considered. So could you give us a briefing on the history of it? We've had it in our minutes, but just for the public record?
So, Tim Hogan, Recreation Director. Following last year's Park and Rec Commission meeting, we, you know, took a good look at the financials and the costs associated with bringing material into the arena for our horse shows. Based on the, the numbers continuing to fall with horse shows, we've been tracking the, the numbers, the financials. Last year, it was decided that the Park and Rec Commission would, would continue with the horse shows and continue to track the financials. So after this year with the horse shows, brought in an updated financial and cost and expense and revenue sheet, which was included in your packet. And based on those financials, the Park and Rec Commission then wanted to see the city council take action, whether or not the horse shows can continue inside the arena.
Council, would the liaisons like to add anything to what Tim's saying?
Sure. I think last year when we looked at things, we were kind of, you know, taking into account, you know, the COVID times and, and things like that, thinking maybe that was, you know, more of the reason. And that's why we said we should evaluate this after another year and see where things were at. It's a difficult decision to make, and I think that's, the Park and Rec Board had a difficult time saying, you know, what really should we recommend to council? So I think overall, they said, okay, Tim, put all the numbers down and, and forward that to council and say, really, council, what, what should we do? I think it's difficult because it's an amenity. It's a, it's a nice thing to be able to have the indoor horse shows in Wyndham. I think a lot of the areas, you know, say we do have wonderful facilities, you know, it's, it's a good place to have a horse show and to come and do events. But we're just seeing, you know, in the cost, that, you know, the cost way exceeds what comes in for the revenue, and the numbers are dropping as far as the numbers of shows. But it's also the numbers of people coming to the shows, you know, the number of horses and people that are, are there and attending as well. And I don't know, you know, there's a lot of factors that that could or couldn't be too. Just, you know, is, are there's many kids involved in that? Just like we're seeing in different sporting events and other things, it's just kind of declining. So I'm not sure, or if it's the cost or whatever. But it's, it's a difficult decision, but we want to make sure that whichever way we go, we make that kind of decision soon, because either way, I mean, if horse shows are going to continue, they need to know so they can be booking things. Things book far out, you know, to get judges, to get things lined up, it takes time and they need that time to know. If things would get canceled, you know, on the other, then everybody needs to know. So that can all be taken care of too. We talked about the alternative of the outdoor riding area. We have an outdoor riding area there, but that definitely needs improvement. We need to put efforts into that. If that would be, if we don't have the indoor anymore and would use the outdoor, then we'd like to see, obviously, you know, seating being out there so people can observe and watch. Something, you know, like a covered area or whatever for the judges and for the paperwork and the things involved, the announcers, you know, those kind of things. And then just improving the overall space and area out there as well. So that could be something that we consider. There are a lot of local areas that have outdoor areas and don't have indoor. I mean, we were lucky that we did have the indoor and we did have, you know, good facilities when, you know, when it was running and people appreciated that. So I don't know. It's one of those things where it's an amenity, just like the swimming pool, like our community center, things like that. We put money into it knowing that we're probably not gonna, you know, get the money all back out of it. It's an amenity to have in the community. But how do we justify, you know, to, you know, this is the whole tax base that's paying for this. It's their money paying to, to do this, and there's a small portion that's the users of this. And so, you know, we gotta be, you know, looking out for the overall cost as well. And so, I don't know, I think it's a fine line to what we do. And I've kind of been on the fence on that when we've been on the Park and Rec Committee. So that's kind of where we're looking. Another thing I just want to point out that we talked a little bit about, it's not just the horse shows, you know, putting that clay base and putting the sand and putting that stuff in for 4H and horse shows and different things like that. Also, we have, you know, the fair, and the fair has a lot of different events and things in there too. I did have somebody from the fair board reach out to me and just wanted to say, you know, the fair board contributes, I think it's 5,500 a year for the fair time or whatever. And so they weren't sure, you know, if that was figured into any of these horse show, you know, like figured into any of this. I mean, I think this is just horse show money, but there is money that the fair, fair board puts towards, you know, having the fair there. So I don't know how that money, you know, if a portion is like for the flooring or how we do there. And also to know that the fair board does have the contract that says so much about, you know, like what kind of stuff is on the ground in there, on the concrete, to be able to show animals and that kind of stuff. So there are, you know, those kind of things we gotta take into consideration too. So that's, you know, like I said, there's so many working pieces to this. That's why I'm like, I think the council just, you know, needs to look at it all. And then I think, you know, some kind of decision one way or another does need to be made just so that we have the timeframe to let everybody know what it is we are planning on doing.
Could I do a follow-up question with the outdoor rink? And I cannot recall, did you bring a capital request? Was there any additional cost outside of the budget that we would have to do for the, for the outdoor rink?
Yeah, so previous, to me taking over, there was already a capital improvements plan to put a roof over the outdoor riding area. It was something that was, was just earmarked, but there, there hasn't been any funding towards any roof or any other improvements for the outdoor riding area.
And I cannot remember anything being in your request for any additional funds. Is that correct?
Yeah, correct. Until, until we know what the future of having horse shows inside, having horse shows outside, I wasn't gonna start putting anything in for requests to do anything until I know what direction we want to go with, with any of that. So, you know, I think the big thing is, is, is knowing, you know, the main part of this is, is what's needed and what, what we need to do for the fair. You know, my thought is, is if, if we're required to make sure that we have a footing in there for the fair, you know, then obviously I think we need to continue to have horse shows inside as well. You know, it doesn't make sense to just bring that material in for the fair and take it right back out because you have the same costs and expenses versus keeping it in there the whole time. You know, my biggest part of this was just showing the expenses versus the revenue for horse shows on that side of it. So if we want to, you know, move into another discussion with, with requirements for the fair, you know, that would be something that would also need to be, be considered. You know, with whatever the lease specifically says, you know, that, that would be a determination of, of a big probably chunk of, of this decision.
Thank you for that, and I'll get to you in a second. Marv, Steve, off the top of your head, do you recall what that lease says at this time?
Sorry, I'm doing double duty, running the camera too. You've got the lease right here. I believe it says it's to the discretion of the city, correct?
That's my understanding, is that the, the footing is to the discretion of the city as to what goes in there. It doesn't specifically say what material, what, you know, it's, you know, very generic.
Jenny had a follow-up.
And I think that's, you know, what material, you know, depending on what they're doing, you know, if you're showing cattle, horses, you know, what you're doing. But what is safe to have in there for the animals and the, you know, kids bringing stuff in for 4H? I mean, that would be, you know, I don't know that information, but I guess that's what I would, you know, like what's safe for animals and people versus?
Right. And just to touch on that, when, when this, when the concrete was first put in, you know, they just put sand on top of the concrete and they learned really quickly that that's not safe. You can't do that. So when I jumped in, called and talked to an individual that basically told me exactly what you have to do. If it's in there for a long period of time, you need minimum of six inches of clay across the whole floor for the footing. If it's a very temporary thing, you can do as little as three inches of clay. But if it's going to be in for an extended period of time, you need to have at least six inches of, of clay, then followed by the sand on top. That makes a, a safe footing for horses and other animals that'll be utilizing the, the floor. So that's what we do. We do a six-inch clay base with sand on top of that.
Marv?
I was just wondering what the number of horse shows you're talking about, about being in this year? And also, have you had conversations with those show people? As to what the future might hold, that it could move outside? Are they willing to do that, or is it just gonna stop all the shows altogether?
So I have had several discussions with different user groups for the shows. It, it all depends on the type of show. When you get into breed shows, such as the Minnesota Palomino, which, which is our bigger show, or was our bigger show, attending, they fly in judges, judges every different day. So three different days, three different sets of judges that they fly in, that they put up in a hotel, you know. And for them to take the chance on, on moving to an outdoor area without it being covered, they, they couldn't commit to that. So they would, they would have to go to another location. Other open shows in the area, they do do them outside. Blue Earth hosts several shows. We're in contact with them. And, and what it comes down to with a lot of them is scheduling conflicts. You know, they have set schedules that they go from show to show to show. And potentially, if they were to come to Wyndham, then they might have to, you know, cancel at a, a different location or try to fit a weekend in where people aren't already at a different show. So it, it's not that it can't be done, but it could cause some scheduling conflicts or, or take them away from a different location. But there are several open shows that, that are done outside in our area in southwest Minnesota.
It kind of sounds like these shows do bring in some economic activity here in Wyndham, from the hotels to possibly food and grocery stores and stuff. Would you say that's accurate to say?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, they're, they're, they do, you know, primarily, they, they stay at the arena. They, their trailers have living quarters, so they're, they're staying at there. You know, we do collect electric from, from them staying there, but it's, you know, very small amount. You're talking $10, $10 a night for that. But the judges and, and some of the other individuals working the shows will stay in the hotels if they're not participants in the, in the show. Mainly, it's the judges that are staying up in the hotels. But the, the user groups, I mean, yeah, the, the, some of them, they, they're primarily there. They have pizza parties there. They order in food from that. They have food trucks that come locally, so you're, you're getting local food trucks down to the arena that, that are buying, you know, and patronizing that. And, and every once in a while, they will go out and have a meal somewhere versus, you know, basically campground-style meals for the weekend. So yeah, they, they, you know, I'm not sure how much or, you know, but any little bit helps, right?
Do you envision where a good marketing plan could raise the number of shows coming back to Wyndham? Or it's just what it is?
So in speaking with, with a lot of the user groups that have been down here and the, the user groups that are in, in other locations, there's talk of, yeah, we're gonna try to get people, we're gonna try to get people. There's, you know, but the reality of, of the numbers are still gonna be low, you know. We went from the Palomino show putting in over 100 stalls down at the arena to last year it was down to 80, this year was, or 88, this year is down to 58. So when you're losing 30 stalls, you know, of rev, of a show, you're talking about $2,000 worth of stall rental for that. But, you know, I don't know what the, what the chances or possibilities of, of bringing more shows based on schedules. I think it'd be a lot easier to bring open shows versus breed shows just because of their schedule. And they kind of have a specific time and, and dates that they, they have open for that. A lot of the other open shows, like I said, are already outside at other locations. But they are networking. I have people, you know, that are the user groups networking with those other groups to, to try to get more shows to the area. But this year, we did not see any, any other, besides one open show that we had that hasn't been there for the past few years, but that was only one.
Do you know how other areas are doing, or is it just the Wyndham facility that has decreased in the horse shows?
Not only have our numbers decreased, but it is across the board. There are other locations, they just do not have the amount of riders that they used to. Same with 4H, they don't have as many participants as they used to. What, what I'm hearing from a lot of the user groups, because they don't have the youth numbers coming back up, and as some of these people are basically aging out and not able to ride anymore, and they just do not have the numbers of young kids coming to fill those empty, empty areas.
I'm back on the question of the arena, the base being put in during the fair. Every, do we do this every year? Do we, have we historically moved a base in for the fair?
So prior to the updated ice system at the arena, when they poured the concrete and updated that, that part of the arena, it was just a, a clay base to begin with. So they, all they had to do is bring in sand for that. So that was pretty much the expense for the city, was to just bring in sand and, and go from there. So now with the expense of hauling the, the clay is the biggest, you know, side of that, the amount of time and labor dollars that are involved with hauling it in, getting it packed, putting in the footing, and, and majority of it would be on the cleanup side for that. So that's the, the part that's changed in the past was, we already had a dirt floor and you would just bring sand in and you were able to host your shows with, with minimal expense on that end of it.
Who's gonna provide an interpretation of the lease agreement? Because I cannot, you know, see if, if we're bound by the agreement to move clay in, if they had a, a bull riding event or something in there, have they had those in the past? You know, if, if that's, and I'm just asking, if that's in the lease and interpreted that way, do we have to ask that question first? I mean, it'd be, yeah, asking Ron Trammell. I would want that backing, I guess, if, if I had a vote. But I think it's up to the council, but I, I'm, I'm looking at, there's a legal question here. And if they want it in there, maybe it should be in there all year long? You know, tough question. So other comments?
And I also think, you know, as a And I also think, uh, you know, as a city, we have different amenities. There's some amenities we have as a city that don't return uh, as much money and some that do. And so, uh, you know, it's a kind of a balancing act. So for me, um, uh, since there are some unknowns and due to the potential legality, I mean, we don't know where that's going to land. I think that's, those are two important parts to think about.
Do you have the same amount in an outside as you have on the inside right now?
The, the outdoor riding area is bigger than the inside riding area. You know, we're confined within the, the dashboard for the hockey rink, which is 200 feet by 85 feet. I don't off the top of my head know what the outdoor, um, riding dimensions are, but it is definitely bigger on the outside than it is on the inside.
So the fair board could still use the outside if, if that were the case, if they, if for some reason, as far as I'm concerned, I know why I would go, but, uh,
There, there would have to be some, some things done to the outside, you know, if, if they were to utilize that, there, there is no seating out there for, you know, if they wanted to have a, a rodeo or a bull riding or, you know, if, if they did transition to the outdoor, you know, there's really no way they could have that unless people want to stand along the rail, you know, um, but then you got safety things to worry about with that too. So I mean, there would have to be some stuff done to, to make seating available, um, for events and things like that for them.
Either way, it's going to cost, no matter which way we go. Either we're going to lose on the inside and I don't know, you know, if it has to be done, I guess the way I feel about it is it has to be done. I mean, what choice do we have? Have two choices, either don't do any or. Well, it's, it's either you, either you do the outside or you don't. I mean, would get rid of the horse shows? Would get rid of all that or, you know, uh, looks everything I saw, uh, and, well, it, it, it costs a lot of money, whether you be inside or outside. But just like an outside pool is probably a heck of a lot cheaper than inside in the long run. If you, I'm just making a point. So if you had to do the seating and you had to do a roof, would the Palomino people still want to come there? You know, I don't know. I don't know nothing about horses. I, you know, well, I know something about horses, but not what you want to hear. And it looks to me like the fairs are getting smaller every year. I mean, and I know that the older, the people are getting older, the farmers are, are getting larger farms and, and fewer of them. So, uh, you know, when I went to school, every quarter section had a farm on it and a half a dozen kids. The schools were doing good. But then it kinda went to heck from there. I mean, just, and you can see it in the fairgrounds itself, the buildings that are being not used.
Uh, Tim, one final comment for me is I believe at the, uh, at your, when we were discussing the capital, you said people, um, have had in outdoor arenas, a non-covered arena and they still have most of their events. Is that true? Is that?
Yeah. So it, in the, in the area, I mean, you have Jackson, you have Nobles County. There's, there's several counties around the area that do host outdoor events. You know, some of those are, are probably better set up than ours is to host those because they do have the seating and, and amenities for hosting those events where, you know, we would have to look into, to doing that. So it would be, you know, some, some expense at, at that level too. Yep.
And I guess to follow up on that, I remember the demolition derbies and whatnot. They had bleachers set up and everything there that housed quite a few people. You know, around there. Um, do we still have those or were they from the school? Or I guess I don't know where they went. The bleacher setups, they were aluminum bleachers at that time.
Yeah. If, if I remember correctly, I, I think some of the bleachers were hauled in from maybe some of the parks in Wyndham that were, were brought down there. I know the ones that are up at, um, the rec area are pretty much permanent now because they can't get them out through the trees have gotten so big that they can't move them in and out. Um, because of that, and then they planted more trees up in the area. Um, so those ones are kinda set where they are. Um, the fair board does have one set of bleachers down there. Um, but yeah, I think the other ones were hauled in from other locations for those events.
Um, I guess I would like to see that maybe we, um, hold off and come back hopefully at a very soon future meeting, um, and get more information from Ron Trammell on, um, clarification for the fair and what we need to put there. Cause I think that ultimately makes the decision for us if, if it needs to have the clay and all that, you know, then it's like, why would we just do it for the fair? Then we might as well just have it for the whole, you know, time. Um, that would be my, you know, thought about that, but I think we need that clarification and the sooner the better because I want to make sure everybody has plenty of time to prepare for either way, you know, that this could go. Everybody has ample time to make plans for next year regarding this.
And also one more thing, I'd like to see maybe a little more detailed thing as far as the money. Um, how the, uh, the county, uh, the fair board, how that money factors into the whole scenario as well.
Yeah. And with that, it's, it's basically an exchange of, of funds. So the, the fair board pays us $5,500, um, for the lease of that the arena sits on their grounds. And then the city pays the fair board $5,000 for the use of the grounds throughout the summer. So it's, it's an exchange of 5,000. I'm not sure what the difference of that extra $500 would be for, but, um, usually it's, it's, it's in the leases description for land use and some building use, um, is what the exchange of the, the monetary side of it is. Nothing specifically for, um, horse shows or events or anything. It's usually just land and building use.
As, uh, I'm hearing this and I wanted to check my calendar because I, I think there's, uh, uh, one item that needs to be addressed and that's interpretation, uh, prior to coming back to the council. I would also say if, if the, uh, uh, let's get this out of the way at the same time, if the county, uh, attorney, is that who would look at this or do they have their separate legal counsel? Okay. I'm getting the nod from Steve that, uh, the fair board has their separate legal counsel. Give them the fairness to give their opinion on that too. I mean, I, I just think it's, you know, let's give both sides a chance to look at it or we'll be delaying again, right? So, uh, with that, I think the council has come to decision time. I see three options is to say yes, to say no, or table it till the next meeting, which I believe is October. Uh, would that be, uh, 18th? 18th.
I'd make a motion to table the issue to the next city council.
I'll second.
Motion by Jason, second by Jim to table this until the next council meeting is held. And during that time period, I'm sure with the instructions that, um, Tim and Steve does a due diligence to do the investigating on that. Okay. Any questions on the motion, Lisa?
Would it be beneficial to find out how much it would cost to rent bleachers for an event? If, um, we have like a difficult time getting our own sets, like how much it would cost? And, um, if you have the outdoor, then, um, possibly rent it for the, for those, for the fair time, I should say.
Okay. With that, there's a motion on table to table to the next council meeting. Any further questions? Not all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you. Okay. Next annual, oh, sorry. I forgot to trigger your annual firefighters relief association report. Is Ben or anybody gonna?
I, I can do it and then can jump in if we need something. Uh,
All right.
This is basically the annual firefighter relief report, um, that is a separate entity that deals essentially with the pensions for the fire department. Um, yep. And this is a form that gets, uh, reported to you and then sent on to the state of Minnesota. So the page that I've got up right now shows what their member liabilities are for 22 and projected for 23. And then what kind of assets the fire relief association has. Um, and then kinda the bottom line of it is whether they have a surplus or deficit based on the amount of benefit and how their fund does. Uh, there is state dollars that go, um, relief association that comes to city and then the city transfers those to the fire relief association. As you can see, they're projecting a surplus of $666,000. Um, that's important as the city is responsible for any deficit that would be in there. Um, the pension, uh, board has been very good over the years of kinda adjusting the benefit, uh, depending on the, uh, financial position of the fund. Uh, they've done a very good job monitoring this fund and investing it. So, um, obviously they're showing a healthy surplus for this fund. And then the next page is just kinda showing your, um, not your normal costs, your admin, uh, things like that. And so that's in there. And then this is their fire relief association benefit worksheet. You can see that, uh, the benefit is, um, per year average is $2,979 for the most recent year of 21. And maximum benefit is 5,100 is set by statute. Uh, we're well under that number. Uh, so there's not a conflict there. And so, um, our, my recommendation and as well as the fire chief, I can speak for him, uh, would be to approve this report, uh, that you've seen it and sign off on it so that we can get it submitted to the state of Minnesota and get our fire relief association dollars for the most recent year.
Well said, Steve. Is there a motion to that effect or accept that report?
Removed.
Second.
Moved by Jason and second by Jim to approve the annual firefighter relief association report. Actually, what's the fiscal year on that? Is that a 22 or 23?
This, it's a ca, it's a calendar year.
Calendar year.
Yep. So they're waiting to get the audit done. And so that just got done fairly recently, which is then this report gets put together and then gets on your council agenda. So.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Resolution calling for public hearing. This is the 2022 miscellaneous special assessments that list as being, um, uh, noticed would be for the ones included in your packet. I'm not going to, um, talk about all of them, but they are listed and a lot of, uh, uh, we have some fire calls in there. We have some mowing in there. I think some snow removal even a little bit. So, uh, those type of things. And, uh, anything else to add, Steve?
Uh, just that this is calling for the hearing. The hearing would be November 15th. Uh, these, um, special assessment, uh, properties would be noticed. And then, uh, if you take action, um, in November, then they get another opportunity to pay them off before the end of the year, before they get assessed to the county for collection of taxes. And that's, uh, done at over a one-year period, unlike street projects that are 10 or 15 years. These are, you know, like as you mentioned, fire calls, mowing, snow removal, that kinda thing. Um, so those are typically one year. And then we go 5%, which is what we did last year on them. So, but this will be calling for the hearing and there's just short of $8,000 in this miscellaneous special assessment, um, run, that's what we say.
Any questions? Seeing none, somebody care to introduce the resolution?
I would introduce the resolution declaring the cost to be assessed and calling for the spec, the public hearing.
Second.
Resolution introduced by Marv, second by Jim. Any discussion or final questions? Hearing none. Steve?
Grunig.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Farag.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, number nine is the airport Mendat state, uh, grant agreement resolution 2022 crack seal and beacon project. Steve goes to all these meetings, so I'll let you handle this, Steve.
Sure. Uh, so we've talked about this before. It was in our, this last year's capital improvement plan. Uh, we've got, uh, crack filling. We, we did one project last year. We didn't quite get through all of it. So there were some additional, um, cracks that need to be filled. So we've got that on a continuation. And then our, uh, beacon, it's the red and green light that you see spinning or the white and green light that you see spinning out there. Um, that's a very old piece of equipment and takes quite a bit to maintain. It's getting pretty hard to find parts. And so what the, uh, plan is there is to replace just the head. We're leaving the tower and everything that was most cost effective, just to replace the head. That will then be an LED type of product. Um, this is a FAA project, so 90% will be funded by FAA, 5% by the state of Minnesota and 5% by Wyndham. So our share of that is $4,115 in some sense.
You'll probably put that, is that in the CIP?
We've already had that in the 2022 CIP and where our matching funds come from, um, there's some dollars in the CIP budget, but we may or may not be able to use some of the, uh, uh, additional federal funds that we got, like the K, the CARES Act money. Then there was some Chris, uh, funds that went as well. So we may be able to use some of that. So, um, engineers and, um, states are sorting that out. So, but we're recommending approval of this. Uh, we're hoping to get the work done yet this calendar year. So we've been waiting for the grant agreement to come. So.
Is there a motion to approve the grant agreement?
I would introduce the resolution authorization for authorization to execute Minnesota Department of Transportation grant agreement for airport improvement excluding land acquisition.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, just a clarification, Steve, does that include this, uh, authorization to sign the grant agreement?
Yes, it does. The, the number two therefore, mayor and city administrator here are authorized to execute the agreement. Yes.
Thank you. I didn't look that close. And I'm sorry, that was introduced by Jason and seconded by Lisa. Lisa, thank you. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Sherman.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Farag.
Yes.
Grunig.
Yes.
And that resolution carries. Uh, item number 10 is a resolution adding additional election judges. Uh, there's, uh, two more, uh, Maury Bayam and Dawn Emmett. Um, to be added as election judges. Is there a, uh, someone want to introduce the resolution appointing as noted?
I would introduce the resolution adding additional election judges.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Uh, introduced by, uh, Jenny, seconded by Lisa. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Steve, roll call, please.
Nelson.
Yes.
Grunig.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Farag.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
And that carries. We're on to new business. Any new business tonight? Seeing none, I'll go on to old business. I do want to bring up one topic under old business and that would be the striping that is, has been done on Highway 60 through town. I've been hearing some comments on both sides, uh, that have came to me. Uh, the council has also seen an email or two. Um, and I would like actually, because I think this is going to be a, uh, a good discussion. We have the opportunity that Steve set up with, uh, Mendat being here on November 1st. And I think that'd be a good opportunity to, um, uh, in the meantime, to receive comments from the public if they want to. I would. No, and it, we will make that no. No, and it, we will make that noted, that it is not a public hearing on the first. It's not for people to take that time, and, uh, they're not going to have an opportunity to speak. It's MINDOT and the council talking, but I would like to hear the comments because I've heard, heard both sides, okay? And, you know, and just to comment, I have, it's not what I thought was going to be placed. So I, there's a discrepancy there, and I just, myself, I want to understand that. But, um, the council will also have, have comments and questions they'll be able to ask, and I think it could be based on comments or questions we get from the public. So I myself would like the public to have that, take the opportunity right now and email, um, or address a letter to the council that we can then hand those comments off, uh, good questions. I, I don't want this to be a, you know, we're, we're going to come out and bash MINDOT, you know? That, that's not my intent. It's, uh, there, there's positives, I, I think with it, and there's, maybe there's some negatives or misunderstandings of what was going to be done. So I would just like to have those questions that the council can ask. So I would, I would entertain that, uh, you know, the public takes that opportunity, send emails, uh, cordial emails, this isn't a, you know, a rampage, but take advantage of having council members and a mayor that you can email on the website, the city of Wyndham website, our, our emails are on there, sending us a, a note with questions. Uh, would the council agree with that, or, I mean, I, I.
Pretty much just volunteered them.
Yeah, I did, didn't I? But I, I, I think that's good. Um, I'd, I'd rather have people, uh, contact us and be able to speak their voice so we know what to ask MINDOT on, on their behalf, so I'd, I'd encourage that. And I have encouraged people already to do that, so I'll leave that at that. Is there any other old business? I think council, um, council comments. Lisa, would you like to go first tonight?
I just have my usual. Go on out and support your Wyndham Eagles.
Lisa, could I ask you about this that's in front of you? Okay, and I had this, um, Steve made copies of this. I was asked to attend the, uh, October 12th, a walk to school day. And so I'm also going to promote that, and, uh, I was asked to, to join in the, uh, kind of meet and greet and, uh, join the students as they're walking or showing up at the, at the schools, uh, the times and whatnot are addressed on here. Um, and, uh, the assistant principal had called today, and I said, sure, I'll be there. And I also asked, how about the council? And they would absolutely love it if council members would want to come and, uh, take a walk with students as they're coming to school, uh, take a few laps around the, around the track. So, um, the invite has been passed on, and, uh, also to just let the, uh, public know that, uh, this is, you, you know, part of the, uh, uh, Safe Routes to School program, you know? And we have these nice sidewalks and whatnot connecting, uh, our educational facilities, and I think it would be good for, uh, you know, just people to know and, and support the local school district too. Okay? So thank you for bringing up the, the Eagles again. All right, we'll go to Jim.
I'd just like to second what Dominic said about, uh, comments and everything about this. I mean, if you don't, don't say nothing, nothing's going to get done. I mean, it's, it's, that's just the way it is. Um, but let us, so we can let them know what we feel anyway, so.
I was just going to say that, uh, Mr. Hartsford has moved on from our economic development as our interim, uh, director, and the search continues for someone to fill that position. Mr. Nasby and Mary Hansen will, I operate that department, uh, hopefully, and, uh, keep track of the loose ends. I don't know how much major new stuff will get done, but there's a lot of, uh, loose ends out there, so. Uh, thanks to Steve and Mary Hansen for taking that on.
Jenny?
I agree with Marv, Jim did a good job while he was here and trying to fill in, uh, for everything. And, um, if anybody knows anybody that could be a good, uh, fit for EDA director here, send them down to Wyndham, or if, if they want to do the assistant city administrator. You know, I think it's, it's open, I mean, it's flexible, so if people are interested in something or people are in that area of study or have experience and, and really want to promote our talent, you know, like so many people say, I want another grocery store, I want this, I want that. It's like, where are these people out there that are the go-getters that can say, hey, let's find this stuff and bring this stuff to our community and be that, um, kind of cheerleader for Wyndham? So if you know somebody that fits that bill, send them our way. Um, and then my only comment was I just wanted to thank all the people that volunteer to be election judges, um, you know, to sit up at the community center or the different places that they sit to, um, collect ballots and things like that, um, on election day. That's, you know, very nice that these people volunteer to do that, and we have a growing list, so that's good to see.
Thank you, Jason.
Yes, sir. Um, I would love to be at that, uh, walk to school day. I have an early meeting, I leave at 5:00 AM that morning, unfortunately. So I won't be able to be there.
You won't be back?
Yeah, no, it's, it's, yeah, for a number of hours into the afternoon. Um, uh, but the other thing, um, I want to also encourage everyone in the public, uh, please, um, uh, give us your thoughts, uh, that are thoughtful and thought through because, uh, obviously we have a big decision, and we do need to influence MINDOT in the early stages because I realize once they make up their mind, you know, that's kind of how the chips will be laid out. Um, so also, um, in comments too, it'd be really helpful if it's not just a correction because we can, we can see I was a little bit surprised at the striping myself. Uh, but if they have ideas or solutions, they could at least, uh, throw our way, that could, uh, help us along the way. And I really appreciate that. Thanks.
Steve?
Okay, uh, actually, I want to thank the work for the boards and commissions. We've been through a lot of projects. I, most recently, utility commission has been very, very hard at work, working on our transmission project, the generation project, and those are huge impacts to our community for a very long time. And so the work of our boards and commissions needs to be recognized and thanked. Park and Rec had a discussion on what to do with the horse shows, as we've had tonight. It's not an easy job, so I want to thank those citizens for stepping up and participating, and, and thanks to you guys for all the time that you spend doing this. I know it's not a real thankful or high-paying job, but, uh, thank you for all of your time.
Thank you, Steve. That's a good lead-in, uh, talking about our, our, uh, the boards and commissions. We happen to have two openings on telecom now, and we had a resignation there last week, so, um, we are looking for two telecom, uh, members. So please, anybody that has interest in, um, you know, adding to the expertise on that telecom board, it'd be much appreciated. Also, one park and rec, I believe, uh, we need, is that correct? Okay, so a park and rec, uh, board member also. Uh, if you'd like to get in on the, um, the horse show discussion here at the last minute, feel free to join a, join a good, uh, vocal park and rec board. Uh, they are very active, um, for our community, and I, I think that's good. So, uh, maybe we even have someone in town that's interested in this specific topic. Come and share. You know, um, we can have you appointed by next meeting. You want to plug?
I just, for park and rec, um, because it's not just the horse show. I mean, we've got, you know, the new buildings going up, the shelter buildings, we've got pool discussion coming up, uh, the future of Castle Kingdom, I mean, there's so much stuff going on in our parks. Um, hopefully the kayak launch will be, you know, in by next spring. There's so much stuff going on with park and rec, so if you are any person that enjoys the park and rec stuff in Wyndham and can help give input and direction, come see Tim Hogan or talk to the city and get on the park and rec board.
Thank you, and if you have nominations, please pass them my way, and we'll see what we can do in contacting these folks, so. Um, I have nothing further except, uh, I have noticed some beautiful trees around our community. It's, uh, that time of the season, and we're, we're seeing that even in our community and town. And there's a lot of beautiful scenery out there. I know my wife wants to go for a drive, so I still owe her that. And, uh, so, uh, get out and see the, see nature this time of year. Okay, take care of everybody, um, and we are, we are adjourned by unanimous consent. Thank you.